I call a Dublin City Council meeting order. We're already standing and I'd like to ask Councilman Johnson if he would to give us an indication and we'll say please to flag it.
Let us pray. Our gracious Father, we give thanks for this day. We thank you for this season. We pray for the people in this community and all of the world. They have a blessed season, a Christmas season, and also a new year. We thank you for this council, for the decision they made today, and we thank you for the epiglen audience today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you everyone for coming today. Don't think we have any special presentations to make today. Let me make sure we get today. Okay, well is that the last, just the last one?
Right, yes.
I want to add it then right quick. Okay, item number one on the agenda is approval of the November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting minutes.
Move for approval.
Got a motion by, I'm sorry, that's Gary. Okay, and second, let's see. Bill. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the minutes in discussion today. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over three thousand dollars.
Motion to pay the bills, Mayor. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Greaves that we pay the bills in discussion today. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number three is approval of purchases over three thousand dollars, Mr. Jones.
First purchase we have is for a new electronic lock system for City Hall. We've never, in my memory, replaced the locks on City Hall. We don't know how many keys are out, and this gives us a very secure control over the building. Mr. Robert Jefferson has looked at the different systems, looked at what's available, looked at the proposals, and staff recommendation is to go with Net Planner of Cool, Georgia, and the amount of contracts going to be thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Okay, you heard staff recommendation, what's your plea?
Move for approval.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Davidson, a second by Mr. Johnson that we make the purchase in discussion. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
The second proposal is for janitorial services for the City Hall, the Police Department, the Henry Thomas Auditorium, and the warehouse and shop. We've had employees doing this, but we're looking at outsourcing this now. We took bids, had a good response, and the best bid, it's the lowest bid and the best bid, was from Clean by Lucy Two Incorporated of Madder, Georgia, amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, you all heard staff recommendation.
Move for approval.
Yeah?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Greaves and a second by Mr. Davidson that we approve the contract in discussion today. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next item is radar and computer units for our new heat cars. We're back on the heat program with the state. It provides money for two traffic enforcement units, and we're buying radar units and computers for those two cars. The total amount is fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents, and this is one hundred percent reimbursable from the ground.
Make a motion to approve purchase, Mayor.
Second. Got a second by Mr., oh, first, a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Brown in discussion. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, got one more?
Yes. The last one is, we're looking at the possibility of running a new gas line on the east side to a, to a new plant, to school expansion into a subdivision, and the first thing we have to do to do that is have the route surveyed. We had several quotes, and the lowest quote was from Christian Engineering LLC, amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and staff recommendation was to award to Christian Engineering LLC.
Got here motion to award that contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, let's see here. We got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second, we due a second by Mr. Davis. Got a second by Mr. Davis in discussion. Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, item number four is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend section eight point six development standards for R five of appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances of the city of Dublin to provide for certain variances to the minimum area requirements for R five to impose additional conditions and for other purposes. Mr. Jones, would you read that proposed ordinance change?
Ordinance number eighteen dash fourteen, an ordinance by the mayor and city council to amend section eight point six development standards of R five of appendix A zone of the code of ordinances of the city of Dublin, Georgia, to provide for certain variances to minimum area requirements for R five developments subject to other requirements. Authorize the Board of Zoning Appeals to hear requests for variances as provided herein to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, we will now close our city council meeting. We will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance change. Not as anyone would like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance change. Here neither, we will now close the city council meeting or the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting and turn it over to council for action.
I have a question. This will be regulated by the planning zone where someone, if they have a smaller parcel, they submit the plans, is that correct?
That's correct, to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Zoning Appeals.
They have to, it's actually, they have to do a request for a variance to get it. So, yeah, they'd have to spit the plans, we'll take a look at them and work with them on how to make.
You know, if they have to, you have to process.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the rezoning in discussion. Mr. Daniels, we call the road.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Greaves?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number five is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex and incorporate into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, point two four acres of land located at twenty-seven thirty-six, highway two fifty-seven, landlot ninety, in the first land district of the three hundred and forty-second GM district of Lawrence County, Georgia, as B two highway oriented business zone. Have you got that on the, have you got a map of that, Robert?
I'll be reading it while he's pulling it up.
Okay.
It's ordinance number eighteen dash thirteen, annexing and incorporating, incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, zero point two four acres of land located at twenty-seven thirty-six, highway two fifty-seven, landlot ninety, in the first land district of the three hundred and forty-second GM district of Lawrence County, Georgia, as B two highway oriented business zone. The proposed use is a small office or warehouse.
Okay, we will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed annexation and zoning. Not as anybody like to speak in opposition to. Here neither, we will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting and turn it over to council for action.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the annexation in discussion. Mr. Daniels, we call the road, please.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Greaves?
Yes.
Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Got one more second reading, and that is out of number six, which is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezon one hundred and thirty-four point one-two acres of land behind the three hundred block of Parker Dairy Road, known as landlot two fifty-eight and landlot two fifty-nine tracks one, two, and three, Dublin, Georgia, from R four multifamily residential zone to M two general industrial district. Mr. Jones.
This is an amendment, the ordinance zoning map amendment number eighteen dash twelve, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, was previously amended for the purpose of rezoning one hundred and thirty-four point twelve acres of land behind the three hundred block of Parker Dairy Road, known as landlot two fifty-eight and landlot two fifty-nine tracks one, two, and three, Dublin, Georgia, from R four multifamily residential zone to M two general industrial district zone. Proposed usage is a solar panel array.
Thank you. We will now close our city council meeting and open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning.
Yes, sir.
My name's.
If you would come up to the mic and state your name for the record, please.
Something new for me. My name's William George. I live in Rolandwood Estates, and of course, this, this property we're talking about backs right up to Rolandwood subdivision, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Georgia. And of course, this, it doesn't bother me at all, but it does affect me. So, I, I've looked at all the pluses and minuses, and this solar, being an electrical engineer, this solar panels farm would not be any problem with me or with any of the people that I know of that I've talked to in Rolandwood. And so, I can't speak for everybody, but I have some privileges of some. And I personally am in favor of this to happen. I think it's good for, good for Dublin to be proactive in the renewable energy fields, and I think this is something good, and it has no negative effects that I can tell.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Thanks. I'm Greg Kelly. I'm a developer. I'm with Rockbridge Energy. We're the company that wants to put the project out there, and we've been working on it. I've been working with Georgia Power, developing solar projects across the state for the last seven years. We've worked in Dublin a lot with Christian family, farmers furniture, we've built all their projects, the one down for YKK. So, would love to see this get approved. We've met with the community, we've met with two of the council members. We've moved it to make sure that everybody's happy with where it's going to go. We're going to put crush and run at the road. Somebody asked me today, will we put crush and run, make sure there's no dirt and mud and everything on that site? But once the site is built, it'll only take about three months to build the site. We'll build it in the summer times, so it won't be too muddy or anything. But once it's built, it will, it will grow in out there, it'll be beautiful. We're going to have a berm or a screening around it, so residents won't see it. It will make about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in ad valorem taxes. We're doing another project in the city of Dublin. That will create another twenty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. So, it's good from the tax base, is not a lot of jobs involved, but there is maintenance. We'll have a local contractor go out and cut the grass and look after it. So, it does benefit the community in that, you know, there's taxes from it, it's quiet, doesn't make any noise, and once it's in, you really won't know what's out there. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you can, but these projects are really hard to get with Georgia Power, so we're hopeful we get it approved.
You were talking about, can you exactly, can you explain exactly the location we're talking about now?
Yes.
We keep the screen.
Oh, yes. We, it was, when we originally had laid it out and before we talked to the community, it was closer to the houses. So, we have moved it back into this position now, and as you can see, it's hard to read, but there's three hundred and sixty-two feet from the back of the property line, three hundred and forty-one, four hundred and fifty-four over here, and then it also butts up to the historic cemetery there. It's got a good distance there, but there also will be a screening there, so you really won't see it from there. And that will all roll up in the back there. There's a road, an existing road that comes in, that's the road that we'll use to, for the construction and access.
What happens if it seeps into the solar farm inside the?
It reverts back. If we don't, if we don't go forward with it, we do have the okay with Georgia Power, and everything is a go. So, but if we don't, in the, in the ordinance, it says it reverts back to, to the original M two. Now, it goes from M two back to the original, I guess, R four.
What happens to the panels themselves? Who removes them?
If, if what happens?
If the project fails and you decide you're going to abandon it, who picks up the solar panels and removes them?
We will. There will be a, the owner of the project will, will have an agreement to their lease that they have to return the land to its original position.
That's a question.
But it's a thirty-five-year deal with Georgia Power, so they will buy the, the power for thirty-five years, which is, you know, sort of extraordinary. So, it's really from a purchasing an asset standpoint, to have guaranteed revenue for thirty-five years, that's, that's pretty good. So, that's why it makes it not easy for us to sell, they're hard to sell, because it's very, very competitive, so the price of the power is way below avoided cost. So, for Georgia Power, so it's less expensive than any other power they're buying, believe I'm not. Solar power has come down that much, but, you know, more, less than nuclear power, less than any coal, any gas, or anything else they're buying. So, Georgia Power wants it, but it's a thirty-five-year deal, which is very attractive.
So, about thirty-five years, if that deal is over, it'll either be renegotiated or if not, then the.
Then they get, and they're, everything is one hundred percent recyclable.
It'll be removed and brought and taken back to swiss condition.
Yep. And it's very easy to take these down, you know, it's, and taking it out of the ground, we put up, we, we have a basically a pile driver that puts steel posts in the ground, and that comes along, and it just cranks it back up the same way. So, in thirty-five years, the technology would be even quicker, but the project goes in, it's just an assembly job. And machines are on a GPS tracker, they know where to put the post, they drive it in, they drive the next one, the machine goes down, takes it off, the driver doesn't even do anything, just like the, you know, farmers have. They just sit in the, it's an apartment.
So, yeah.
But I know you could take a phone call later.
Is this not be visible from residents?
No, it won't be initially until everything grows up. You know, they may be able to see it, but, you know, it's, it's going to be four hundred, you know, from the back of their home, it's going to be four hundred feet. And, you know, I've driven along the back of those homes there, and it's all grown up in there anyway, so it's really, but it is levelled out there now, it's a clear, so we won't do any more clearing along that, it's already cleared, but there already is, you know, a nice amount of, you know, cover there. And we did go out, and I met Bill out there and two of the council members, who had talked to their community, and, you know, people were sort of upset and concerned about what was going to happen and what was it going to look like, was it going to be close to their house and all the rest of those things. So, we're sort of, which we wanted to, we want to accommodate people, why not, you know? So, all it was, just moving it on the property into a better location, and so it's still under the property that we're leasing anyway.
Safety issues for us, safety issues with the.
Well, it will, it will be fenced. You know, anything electric has a little bit of safety, but it really, you know, it's not anything really dangerous, but, but, you know, I mean, you can go in and walk around, touch panels, touch things, it's not going to electrocute you, but it will be a fence around it, it'll be a six-foot fence. So, Georgia Power will, you know, do all the things that they do. We're going to run an underground line out there to not have, you know, a lot of power lines people have to look like, look at. So, we'll clean up the, the space out there and have it look good.
You have questions?
So, your company can move panels from the front to school.
Yes, I did. I haven't seen the school, but I guess I need to get out there and cut the grass out there. That's not so good. I will find out who's got, who owns those panels out there, what we can do to get that, because that's not good for solar and, you know. Any other questions? Except for the grass cutting up the school.
Just one quick answer to Mr. Jones's safety situation. You know, this is, this is Georgia Power and everything else, and all of that will be, I have taken into consideration the national electric codes for, you know, the U.S. And so, there will all be installations, and it'll be hard to get electrocuted whatsoever, so there's nothing to be worried about there. This is not the first solar farm that's been built, so it's all code. And our, and our engineering department will, can look at that, too.
Thank you.
Anyone that helps like to speak in favor of? Mr. Vaughn, good to see you.
Out of Mayor, City Council. You know, straight, city. I'm Johnny Vaughn. I live at one twenty-eighth Cascade Road, I mean, Parkdale Road. I didn't complain when you put the cemetery next to my house, because dead people don't make a lot of fuss, and there's not a lot of traffic. But I'm here in support of the solar panels this morning, this afternoon. There are thirty-two houses on the left side of Parker Dairy Road. Seventeen of thirty, twenty-two are property owners, not renters. Across the street, there are twelve neighbors in the county who are friends of mine. So, we encouraged them also to sign the petition that we didn't have any problem with them. They all signed. We didn't actually run us to sign it, we did not, because of course, you know, they can move tomorrow or whatever. But we did speak with them, but I did some, you know, had their own, but it's an insult to tell me what I want in my backyard. I wouldn't come and tell you what you want, Russ Smith, in your backyard, I wouldn't do that. Basically, what we have in that area right now, we only ask for a buffer between the property, and I've been assured by Mr. Kettit that it has went up to three hundred feet now. We did have a hundred.
Yeah, we're going to move the project out. It's three hundred feet off the property line.
Okay. That's acceptable, Mr. Mayor. That's acceptable. We, we, I'd like to give you the petition if I can.
Yes, sir.
Of, of the.
Thank you.
How you doing? All right. I didn't come down on the cemetery, so they were trying to put me in the cemetery. And thirty-two of us on this side, three of the houses are vacant, eleven are renters. On the other side is twelve houses, which is any kind of course, but they are all property owners. That's our neighborhood, even though they live in the county. But that is our neighborhood. I will not speak, I think, Mr. We can get help from you on the side over there, Rolandwood. But what we only ask for is the buffer. We support the solar panels, and there's a thing that we had to get, take care of this morning, about some, the road out there going off of Parker Dairy. And I want to say, we ask that, the, especially our representative supporters out there on this, we really do. And we also ask, I'll be back sometime another, talking to Mr. Lance, Mr. Bass, and Mr. Davis about a sidewalk running down to, what did that country club road be?
Country club.
Talk about.
Country club.
Country club road. I want to thank you, and keep me in your prayer, please.
All right, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else like to speak in favor of? Not as there anyone like to speak in opposition to? Okay, here's no one in opposition to, we will now close the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Is it possible we could look at that list of the, of the people? My daughter lived on that street, she.
There you go.
Do you see any Marion on there?
Who?
Rachel Marion.
Is she a homeowner?
Yes, she is. She's a homeowner. V O A pocket dairy. Do we have any other homeowners here?
I don't see her name on there.
Okay. I was just concerned about the, if someone can explain to me, I know you say you moved it further from the homes. Explain to me about the cadmium telluride, the CD, that's a highly toxic chemical that's part of these solar panels, in one.
Mr. Kettit, would you like to address that?
Yeah, want me to go?
Yes, sir, please.
She asked if there was any toxic chemicals with?
One specifically, why not?
Was it cadmium telluride?
Yes, these, the solar panels that we use, there were, I don't know much about that, it was a very limited little case a while ago, but that's no longer would be the case. These, these panels would not have that, that chemical or that highly toxic or whatever it was. I have heard in the industry a little bit about it, but it's not something, it's not a common.
So, these panels will not be powder made, made from that?
No.
Can you tell me what, what are they, toxic chemicals, what kind of?
No, there's no toxic chemicals that are in the solar panels. I don't know, it seems like I'm not giving a very good answer, but there isn't anything that's, that's toxic in the solar panels. anything that's, that's toxic in the solar panels.
What type of solar panels are your solar panels, I mean?
Well, we use Tier One, and they come from a group, it can come from a group, and we haven't purchased yet, but we'll make sure that whatever that chemical was, and I don't think that's, those are even available anymore, I don't know what that, that was.
According to my research, it's still available, it's still being used in some of the panels being made, maybe not in the ones you all are doing.
Right, so I don't know which ones are using, but wouldn't make sense to, to use a, a panel that has a chemical in it that has a problem, whether it's, you know, real or not, it would just, you know, make sense to avoid it. And there's a lot of different manufacturers, so, like LG, you know, makes the panels that we use, so, and it's, you know, Sharp makes panels, so, you know, big companies and I'm, you know, I'm sure that they're not putting, you know, toxic chemicals in the televisions or the panels.
And you're definitely sure he does not have that in the panels that you're putting up?
I promise it will not.
That's my concern, too, because I did research and, you know, said something about health issues with panels, uh, so that's my concern, too, with the panels, too, so. And you can definitely say that they're not gonna have that in them, you know, 'cause I have lived there, I wanna be catching cancer when I have solar panels in my house, so...
And I don't blame you, I mean, I wouldn't want it either, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't want my people handling, uh, panels to, you know, have it in, or anything toxic, or anything is not good for them.
Can we, like, if we request an inspection of those panels we're putting up, can we get an inspection done?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like...
He'll probably coordinate that for me, if he would, I mean, he's an electrical engineer, he's interested, but...
I would prefer you use someone else, if you don't mind.
Yes, okay.
I was gonna say, you talk to a community, but nobody talks to me either, I'm a homeowner.
Right.
Where do you live at, dear?
324 Parker Dairy.
324 Parker Dairy?
Yeah.
When did you buy that property, dog? We went by the coat house and got this...
I'm right here going to the church.
You haven't moved in, you?
Yes, I have. I've been there.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Let me, let me get us back over here. Bill, what do you have to say?
I can talk, I can address this as an engineer.
Who's, who is the mortgage? If y'all wanna talk, we need to get back up to the microphone. All right, thank you.
Mayor, the mayor and city council, as an engineer, as a registered professional engineer, uh, an electrical engineer, uh, what we're dealing with, it's not that compound, it's the cadmium. Cadmium is a poison, of course, but most of us have that in our pocket, okay, with cell phones and so forth and so on. Cadmium batteries are something we deal with every day, but they're encapsulated to keep, to keep the cadmium away from us, as is the solar panels. If there is any toxic, toxicity, those are contained vessels anyway. So, I, I would let my, my grandchildren go up next to them, but I have no fears whatsoever. If cadmium is encapsulated, has to be, that's again with, in accordance with, with national standards.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Okay, back to the people in opposition, is there anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to this proposal?
Well, I still would like to have an inspection done, and I would like to have...
If you could, ma'am, come up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
I still would, my name is Cindy Johnson, homeowner at 300 Parker Dairy Road. I still would like to have an inspection done, I would like to have something in writing in my hand stating that there don't have any toxicity, because if something come up, at least I have my proof saying, you said it's clear, nothing's wrong with it, but if something come up and they say that's where it's coming from, I have my proof. So, I need something in writing that this is, this non-toxic, not dangerous, no help, more harm to health than no harm about being behind a resident area, so, yeah, I would like for you to do inspection on those panels and give me something in writing, we're gonna put them behind my house.
And you provide that, Mr. Kettit?
Uh, I would have to provide, uh, for the panels that they would, that they have no...
Toxic, it's not harmful to our human body without being behind a resident's house. When you stay at, put the panels behind it, I would like to have something in writing stating that it's not toxic to the human health.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, who will coordinate getting that information?
The city does not need to be involved in that.
Okay.
That's between her and...
All right, that's between two of y'all, y'all go handle that. All right, thanks, sir.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else in opposition to? If not, we will now close the public hearings and reopen the city council meeting.
I have a question that wants me...
Let me get the city council meeting up, and then we start that. We'll reopen the city council meeting and turn it over to council for discussion.
What's not, I know, Josh, we shouldn't get involved in that, but what if that is not provided, and what will we do? Could we, could we go back and revert it to, back to, convert it, what will we do, what can be done, what's...
Once you back to rezonate that, if there's some, between the developer, the property owner, and the joint property owners, they need to work that out on their own, the city does not need to be involved in any kind of guarantee of what's gonna be put on the property. We're in the business of regulating zone.
But once it's resolved, but basically what you're saying, once rezoned, is out of our hands.
Well, it's not in our hands, ma'am, it worked out, but the city does not need to, um, I mean, yes, once you rezonate, the city, yeah, right.
All right, any other questions, comments from council? If not, I hear motion.
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Smith that we approve of rezoning, any discussion? All right, let's see, which end do we start on this time, Mr. Daniel? You call the rolls.
Councilman Brown. Yes. Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Ordnance passes.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, we will now move to, uh, let's see, we're gonna put phone seven, or we're gonna do that? Okay, item number seven, discussion and interaction on contract for court waste.
Uh, this is the software that, basically, it's our courtroom management software, keeps up with the tickets while it's being paid, what happened there, um, we've been using them for a number of years, and we just need to re-up on the contract for the next...
Yep, so that's staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Move for approval, ma'am.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, I think, who's down here. Mr. Johnson was the second, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and interaction on contract with Tyler Technologies.
People ask, uh, yeah.
But David, if you would, make that presentation.
Sure. Uh, over the last two and a half months, the city has worked diligently with Tyler Technologies to, well, over the last two and a half months, the city has actually worked to find a new provider for software, and as we've, um, in our research, we, we've come across the company Tyler Technologies, who is a fully integrated software provider that will unify the city...
I'm sorry, Michael, if you could leave a crap there, so it doesn't look like we're in an executive session or anything, thank you, sir.
That will unify the city and all of its business operations. Uh, currently, we have a software provider that is limited, uh, as far as meeting our day-to-day needs, um, some examples include recording fixed assets, recording depreciation, inventory management, project management, um, code enforcement, um, so we, we've worked with this company, and we, we've put together a cost analysis that includes what we're currently paying, and also what we'll be able to eliminate, and with that, uh, before you in your packet, we have an annual savings of twenty-one forty-five fifty-three annually. Um, the upfront cost on this, uh, fully integrated ERP system is two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand and fifty dollars.
Blake, uh, we have a rep here, is she prepared to make any comments in favor of this, uh...
She actually represents contracts two and three that, uh, city manager Lance Jones has deferred to next month.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I, I got one question, and this is curiosity more than anything, why does it take eighteen months?
Uh, the data conversion itself is a process, um, it's very sensitive that we, uh, go back and not lose the archives and the history, and a good example would be utility billing accounts. We would wanna go back, if I understand the contract correctly, we'll go back two years and have that data, um, that, that would be able to help us identify maybe some issues or questions that may come up, uh, in the future. Uh, and then also, because it is a premium product, uh, we're getting in line, so, uh, there, there are over a hundred, uh, local municipalities and, um, county governments that are currently using that just in Georgia.
Thanks, sir. All right, any other questions or concerns or comments or a motion?
Make this for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the contract, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number nine, is discussion and interaction on resolution authorizing the execution of certain easements to Georgia Power Company for the Jackson Street project.
This resolution, number eighteen dash twenty-three, a resolution of the mayor and council and city of Dublin, authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver certain easements for the Jackson Street Plaza project to the Georgia Power Company, set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, you've heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to approve it?
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Griggs that we approve the resolution, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number ten, is discussion and interaction on board appointments, this is the ones that, uh, I'd, I'd like the council to look at, and I'd just like to read the whole gamut, and then if we need to go back and discuss any one individual, we can. For the library board, I'd like to ask you to reappoint Bob Dixon, uh, on the Dublin Recreation Authority, I'd like to ask you to appoint, uh, uh, Ms. Cynthia Green has, has retired, so we'd like to do our joint appointments, would be Jack Walker, with the county, they've already appointed him. Our two council appointments would be Gary Johnson and Gerald Smith, and then to fill the unexpired term of Louis Curry Jr., who retired, I'd like to ask you to consider Tiffany Stanley, our assistant city manager. Then on planning and zoning, I'd like, uh, to ask you to reappoint David Gay and J. Charlie Garbutt. On zoning appeals, Mark Lee. On historic review board, Dan Lovett. On, uh, housing authority board, James Strickland, Georgia Conway, and Sophia Jordan. And that is my list of appointees, there will be more in January. I hear motion to approve, that's a good question. Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve those appointees, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, item number eleven, the citizens' comments, or do any citizens that would like to address council? Now that we go to council comments, we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, we'd like to, um, inform the council that Cynthia Green will be having her retirement on Tuesday evening here at city hall at five-thirty to seven-thirty, if you could drop in, and, 'cause she did, uh, worked for sixteen years on the recreation board, so, if you could, drop in and wish her well. And this evening, I think Louis Curry and Danny Jones will be at the Breftoon Center at five-thirty, so if y'all could drop in there, no, five, five o'clock, if you could drop in there, wish them good luck also. Uh, but I'd like to thank everyone for coming, cutting us a tire on, I've been watching, I would look at the back door every day, and I've said, they're doing such a good job up there, I wish you would go all over the city of Dublin, tell them how they like property we have. I knew he had it in him, I knew. He had it, 'cause we was church members, yeah, I knew he had it in him, I'm proud of him now.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Griggs?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday season.
That's right. Mr. Edwards?
Well, thank you everyone for coming, and, uh, I know most folks already left, but, you know, it's, uh, commendable that the community, uh, and residents coming together with a resolution or something, uh, resolve the issues on the panels and everything, 'cause, uh, and I've been living the panels, I think it was a good community gesture, you know, kind of look like, and there. And also, I believe there's a young man from troop sixty-five years of the citizenship of the community, if you'll stand and...
Oh, man, big old jury here with that.
And the, uh, I'm doing citizenship in the community merit badge, one of the requirements is to come and listen in on one of these discussions.
You learned something?
And I, I know we've got at least three Eagle Scouts in the room, Matthew Bradshaw's Eagle Scout, Gerald Smith's an Eagle Scout, and I am, and maybe some more.
All right.
The four Eagle Scouts, which were in, anyone else in the room?
Don't look at them, though, son, and think it's not a good organization.
But thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, and as always, thank you to the police department, private security, and for all the, uh, public service people who be, uh, looking out and working holidays while they're all at home, uh, during Christmas, and, uh, you have a job to, uh, see employees with the, uh, the session tours, and, uh, thank you all coming in, America.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith? I'd just like to thank everybody for coming, and I wish everyone a wonderful Christmas and, uh, a happy and safe holiday season, uh, God bless you all. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and, um, you, uh, kings and, uh, you have expressed today, thank you for that. I'd like to remind everyone about Team Court this coming Saturday at nine a.m., and you can follow that, the youth council have that evening at eleven a.m. right here in here, so, come out and see if you can bring your action and our conduct business, and, um, hope everyone has a safe and happy holidays.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo what's been said, would like to thank Blake for his research and so forth, and moving us, uh, forward from a, a data perspective. Uh, also, would like to, uh, thank those who were here and voice their opinions, uh, ears are always open, and would just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all, everybody, everybody bless you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Davis?
Want to thank everyone for coming, I do want to express, um, having, for you all to have a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and I hope the new year be great also. I do want to thank the citizens that came out to voice their concerns for or against a, a certain issue, and when we have these issues and we have the, uh, if we have to postpone at that time, and we have to have meetings to kind of hash out our differences and come to a good resolution for all, I think that was done here today. So, that's how government and the citizens to, should work, and it's a beautiful thing when that happens. I do want to, uh, just commend all of the people, employees, uh, we're doing a great job for the city, and I hope, uh, the action that we take is pleasing to you as employees and citizens of this, uh, great city. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Paul?
I want to say thank you for all of the help that we've gotten from the department heads, and, uh, not just department heads, but everybody who's been instrumental in this process as we're looking to transition, um... process as we're looking to transition, um, the collaborative effort that we've had. You know, this is, this isn't a, um, an individual decision, it is a, a team effort, and I want to say thank you to mayor and council for your approval and blessing, uh, as we, we move forward with this.
Now, y'all just got to talk the chief into it. Mr. Jones?
It's all been said, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Merry Christmas.